Yeah, Kevin Redder is online, so I think we're all here. Laurie's gonna be absent, we knew that.
Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the September 3rd Soto City Council meeting to order.
We'll start with roll call, please. Here.
Hunter Michael.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Redder.
Here.
Thank you, council. Council President Murdock is absent this evening.
I would invite you all to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item tonight is our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from our council meeting of August 20th and approval of pay ordinance number 885. Any discussion of a consent agenda item or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Here, President.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Redder.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carried, Mayor.
Okay. All right, our next item is call to public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business that is not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments discussed under call to public may or may not be acted on by the council during the meeting. There is a four-minute time limit. Does anyone wish to address the council regarding an item not on the agenda? Please step to the mic, state your name and address.
It's Lane Sekavick, I live at 340-80, West 84th Paris. I have a question about the streets that were, I assume, approved for the new development off of Ottawa, with a loop off of Ottawa. Why those were built at least four feet narrower than any other street, also with no curb and gutter. Arbor Ridge, the streets are anywhere from 24 to 25 feet with curb and gutter. The development off of Ottawa is a 20-foot wide street with no curb and gutter attached.
Right.
It's more like a driveway.
It was with an intent, with intent. It was developed, and Mike, you can step in when I say the wrong things, but the intent, that's an alley, not a, not a public street, so that's there to serve as access to the homes, not to convey traffic. It was there with intent to match or try and mimic the traditional neighborhoods in that area. And so, the tents, that's why the curb and gutter was not required and it was reduced to a 20-foot width. And Mike, you want to add anything?
Exactly, yeah, I think, I think you've got it. Yeah, the intent is the homes face either Ottawa, or 84th, or Peoria Street, that's the front of the homes, and then the road that was put in is, is the alley, so all the garages take access and trashcans.
Most alleys don't have fire hydrants. That, it's just a weird design.
Few fire hydrants in alleys around town, yeah.
It just struck me as odd that we've got a brand-new development that's comparable in Arbor Ridge, and now we build something right in town that's not built to the same thing.
Well, it is not the same thing, yeah, no, this is, it's kind of a, it was a traditional neighborhood and infill development, yeah. It's, there's, there are, there are fundamental differences between the two.
Okay, I disagree, but why would we, why wouldn't we put an alley just to access garages if they're built off of Ottawa and Peoria, primarily those two streets, versus just giving them big backyards and facing the garages out? It's just, two cars passing back there's a, a challenge. I realize it's not a through street, but that's, I, I get the intent, but it's not something that makes a lot of sense to me, but that's just the way my brain works. But thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Anyone else under call to public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Item three is old business, which we have none of, so we'll go to item 4A, under new business, receive a presentation on Riverfest stage cover options. Before we do that, I want to just say how exciting it is to have a group, a real audience here. We haven't had that in quite a bit of time, and I appreciate y'all coming here, observing the social distancing and wearing your masks, so thank y'all for being here, but sorry to inter-
It is working. I will turn it over to Doug in just a second. Just by way of background, council, you'll remember that about this time last year, maybe it was a little later in the fall, we decided that we wanted to explore the possibility of a, some sort of a shade structure, cover over the, over the band, over the stage area in Riverfest Park. Our concept at that time was kind of a lower-cost, fabric shade type of a structure, and we engaged Doug to help us with concepts and costing on that, and he presented those sometime around the first of the year. And during that presentation, I think we all collectively decided that we wanted something a little more substantial, a little more permanent, at a little higher price point. I think, at least in my mind, I kind of remember sort of a low-six-figure, sort of $100,000 sort of price point that we were wanting to consider options with that. So, with that direction, we asked Doug to delve into that aspect of that, that was in March. We entered that agreement with him, and so, he spent the last several months putting this information together, and it's quite extensive, some of the modeling that he's done on it. So, I'll turn it over to him then, to step you through what was in your packets and what some of the options are. At the end of, at the end of the night, if we're comfortable moving forward, or at some point soon, Steph, we kind of need direction on, you know, which option, which direction we want to go, because the next step would be to engage Doug to do the plans and specs, to get bids on the structure that we, that we decide on. So that's kind of where we're aiming to end with the discussion tonight. So I'll turn it over to Doug, and I want to be stepping through your proposals or your exhibits, so just let me know.
All right, thank you, Mike, thank you, Mayor, council. It's nice to have an opportunity to actually kind of talk through this with you, because we have been kind of throwing information at you, it seems from a distance, for a while here, so it would be nice to kind of talk through this a little bit. You know, I'd also add that early on, the discussion centered around shade, getting shade and also some weather protection on that space should, you know, their performance in a storm blows in or whatever, so, but as I go through this, I do kind of want to preface, I'm going to talk a little bit about something we haven't talked about yet as well, and that is acoustics. We need to be thinking about that as we make these decisions, so I'll, I'll comment a little bit on that. So, there are a lot of slides in this, and I'm going to go through most of these very quickly. The first several are really just a shade study that I did, because the last time that information was presented earlier in the year, it was correctly brought up that, well, is this really going to provide the shade we want, especially in a summer evening? And correctly, the answer was that 40-by-40 cover that we're looking at, you know, just as a minimal approach to covering that stage, it was not going to be enough to really accomplish the shade goals. So, I took some time here with some modeling, sought for a really kind of look at that. So what I started with was that 40-by-40, just as a starting point, and what I did here was I started with, this is all, which you're going to see are four different scenarios. They're all based off of July 1st, middle of the summer, essentially the, you know, the longest days of the year, not exactly, but very close. From 6:00 up till 8:30, because that's where we really kind of get into the trouble, troublesome period. So this first set of slides is basically looking at that 40-by-40 shade structure centered over a 40-foot diameter stage that we already have, and I have those little, you know, Fisher Price children's stick figures there, just to represent, so we can see where the shade is hitting persons that would be on that stage. And I will say, you know, that person up front is, is very far up front, probably a little bit unrealistically. A performer would probably be a little bit farther back than that, but I wanted to kind of explore a little bit of a worst-case scenario here. So what you can see is at 6:00, and this is, these, these models are placed on the exact spot in the real world, you know, under, under real, real applications of sun angles and dates and times and all that, so this is, this is not just a guess, but this is a kind of very precise deal. What I did was set the eve line at 10 feet, that seemed, you know, a reasonable minimum, you know, with stage, you kind of don't want to be cramping that, that view down too much, you know, shelters sometimes go down to eight or nine, but 10 seemed like the right place to start. So, that is what we're looking at here, and you can see at 6:00, this person up front is already not covered in the shade, that the person's back in the middle of the stage are. It'll get into 6:30, it's starting to get light even in the middle of the stage, so, and at 7, at 7:30 on, we can just kind of run through that. The point of that is, that kind of proves that that 40-by-40 shelter isn't going to provide shade much past 6:00 of real value on that stage. So the next thing I looked at was, okay, well, how big, and I studied several different options here, but I'm just kind of showing you what I thought was sort of the most telling. So, you know, we could have looked at, you know, I could have looked at 48, I could have looked at 54, but I, I looked at 50, and I looked at 60, so this is a 60-by-60 cover with that same 10-foot eve line centered on the stage. And we can talk about the positioning of, of the structure of that stage, it doesn't have to be centered, we could, you know, we can hedge our, hedge our solution out in front of the stage if we want, those are things we can talk about as we go through this. You can see the 60-by-60 shade cover at 6:00 is doing a great job of covering everything. At 6:30, as we go through this, it's still doing a very good job. By 7:00, it's starting to be a little less effective for the front part of the stage, and certainly by 7:30, it's not really providing shade for, for people on that stage. So, basically, the, we're going from kind of 6:00 is, you know, the reasonable solution to 7, and now we're getting into, I thought, well, okay, so that only gets us to 7:00, even with that big of a structure, so what else can we do that's really more directly providing some shade? And this, and what I looked at here was that same 60-by-60 shade structure, by then putting some panels on the front edge to be more, sort of more targeted about how we're getting the shade on that. So, what you'll see here is essentially, at 6, and 6:30, and 7, you have the same shade off of, off the 60-by-60 structure. But at 7:30, where previously without these, these panels, and I'm viewing these potentially as something that could be sponsor panels, something that would, you know, you could, you could use to sort of announce, you know, what the city's program was, or who the band is, et cetera, et cetera, talk more about that. By putting a three-foot depth high by, these are 20 feet long, or 25 feet long, panels on there, it maintains decent shade cover even past 7:30. So there is, there is some value in that in terms of the goal of getting shade on it. By 8:00, the sun is starting to get low enough that it's really like even sliding underneath that, okay? So, there is some value to it, you know, 30, 40 minutes, basically, of shade value. The next option, I wanted to look at, okay, well, I think, and I kind of thought this early on, but I, I just wanted to kind of go this through progressively, that sort of off-the-stage and tree planting of some type really might be sort of ultimately kind of the best solution and perhaps the least expensive. So, this is showing that in 60-by-60 shade, as we kind of go through, at 6, 6:30, and at 7, you know, most of the shade is still coming from the shade structure, but by the time we get into 7:00, if we had, these are, these are basically 25-foot trees planted 30, 35 feet off the stage, off to a side, you know, and one thing interesting about this, the way that that shade, that stage faces, this sun is coming almost exactly in from that, that northwest corner. It's really kind of coming in at the 45-degree angle, by the time it gets down to 7:00, it's really coming in from the side, so that provides the opportunity to actually plant some trees close to the stage but off to the side, and not really have any impact on, on the-
Viewing.
The viewing, yeah, of the performers. So, as you can see here, by 7:30, 7, 7:30, and 8:00, those shade trees, you know, those are not, this, this is not trying to be mature trees, I was trying to pick something that, you know, we could, I think we can reasonably find, and I did make some calls to some nurseries, that there's some stock out there that would be-
Well, this isn't five years in the future, that would be a year one.
This is potentially, yeah, finding some stock that we could tree spade in, some, some mature trees, not mature, but, but farther along, 20, 25 feet tall, that would really provide some of that benefit right out of the gate. Now, obviously, the beauty of, you know, of the trees, you know, it's like the poker tech, you know, put that plug in there, as they grow and get bigger, it's only going to get better. So this is sort of a, I guess, kind of worst case, hopefully, that we could find some trees of that size and bring them in and put them reasonably close to the stage, okay? So, that is what, that was just trying to kind of show you the sort of realities of how time and, and hours affect the shade on that stage and what we need to get that. These next few slides, I want to preface this, these are not really being brought to you as sort of like a final solution as terms of architectural answer, but the start to that discussion about, okay, you know, fabric or a permanent structure, you know, I, I still have time and still have intentions to, to kind of help more fully develop these, but I wanted to at least start to get into this discussion of what the architectural character might be and how that, how you feel about that. If you want to point out something very quickly on all these, you'll see that, as you know, that stage has a little bit of an elevation on the front side, about two feet, so the ground kind of comes down. What I showed here was that the front columns would be placed on some, some piers that would be up out of the ground potentially, so that the structure itself wouldn't have to have some sort of a weird structural design with different leg, different length columns. We could do that if we wanted to, but I, I went ahead just for simplicity and, and showed these piers coming up to match the grade on the backside of the stage. So, this is basically just kind of how big would this 60-by-60 shade structure, you know, look over that stage, with some sort of a setting that looks somewhat similar to ours with some trees in the background? You know, and it's, it's a, that's a big, it's a big piece. Now, I will say, as a fabric shade structure, it's relatively easy to do at that side, at that size with the fabric, becomes more problematic with the permanent structure, we'll talk more about that here in a minute. The next one was just kind of showing, okay, if we did some sponsor panels to help get that additional 30, 40 minutes of shade, what that could kind of add to the aesthetic of, of having an event out there. You know, one of them could be dedicated to, you know, the Soto and to the, you know, advertising the concert series like they had, you know, last summer, or in-band. My entourage pulled up what looked like the Beatles, so I just decided to make sure it was the Beatles, so. Okay, so, those are kind of some, you know, what the fabric shade structure might sort of provide aesthetically. Then I started to look at more permanent structures, as I was asked to do, and what that might look like. And I think that, you know, the big draws, the big sort of takeaways from this discussion are, you know, any sort of a permanent shade structure, that beam running across there, to try to get a span across there, that's quite a span, right? So it's going to have some depth to it. I did talk to structural engineers I work with and some other folks, and, you know, there are some different tricks that, that we could talk about to thin that up, or maybe do an open web kind of thing, so it doesn't seem quite so heavy. But just for the sake of, you know, coming out of the gate here, I went ahead and showed those as essentially kind of deep beams with maybe a little curvature on the bottom, provide a little bit more of a graceful look to it, and potentially some masonry column wraps around the columns, to really give it a much more of a permanent, nice look, and this kind of implies perhaps a standing seam metal roof. And this is a 50-by-50, so. Now, the next few are 60-by-60, I probably don't want to dwell on these too much, but this was kind of where I started initially, with the bigger structure, just a steel roof for added columns. And the last one, Mike, if you go ahead and just kind of scroll one more, we'll kind of point out on this one, I kept the 60-by-60 roofline, but I pulled the, I pulled the columns in off the corners and had a little bit more of an overhang, so that we could reduce that distance between the columns, and therefore potentially save a little money if we wanted to have that big of a roofline. Now, before we go any further, if you, if you don't mind going back to that 50-by-50 real quick, you know, just as, as a point of sort of departure here, to, you know, give a little bit of something to react to, aside from just the, all this information, I, I guess I do sort of think at this point that even this 50-by-50, even though it's smaller than what I studied, could be a solution as a size if it's supplemented with some trees. I, I do think that is an option, and that is reflected in the cost estimate as well, so. Okay, so, then we get into, kind of past these kind of initial architectural studies, the site plan itself, and I think this is some pretty relevant information, kind of outlines a little bit what I've tried to describe. I'm showing a 60-by-60 square over the stage, and I'm showing a group of three trees that are close to that northwest corner, and another group of trees a little farther off. Now, the critical trees, in terms of accomplishing the shading, would be those three, you know, it could be three or four, but those three trees are closest to that corner, you know, would, would really be helpful initially if we can get some in that size range. I suggested another group farther back, because if we would happen to lose one of those, say, five or six years down the road, for whatever reason, those trees behind would, would start to be big enough that even that far back, they're still going to be able to accomplish some of what we're after. So I think it's, it kind of adds some depth to that. Now, you can kind of see from that, too, that none of those tree plantings really have any sort of negative impact on the use of the, of that, of that bowl for, for people seating to watch shows, nor does it have any negative impact on any of the layout for the barbecue contests, those kinds of things we've had down there. The other line of trees that I'm showing there, those are shown 40 feet off of that, that vendor pathway, as, as we refer to it, being that that is the distance that for years now we've been setting up vendor spaces or barbecue contestant spaces off that. So, you know, after years of going out there to mark all those corners, it would be kind of cool to have something permanently there, so that we, you know, you always know where those corners are. But also, that would be, to me, in my mind, it would, you know, I don't think those trees would have to be planted as big spade trees necessarily, it'd be awesome if we could figure out a way to do that, but, you know, those could be more normal, say, inch or two-inch caliper, you have inch-caliper trees, it wouldn't cost as much to place, but I do think there would be some real value in the long term in terms of shading the people that are there to watch the show, to start to provide some of that shade in a way that would not hinder in any way the other activities that we have there going on. So that's kind of what that's showing is, that 20-by-40 rectangle there would be a standard barbecue stall and kind of save a, a walkway space in the middle. So, I think, you know, regardless of how, at what size it would be planted, I, I think a, a planting program like this, gosh, 10 years from now would be just an amazing addition to the space, maybe even less than that. You know, five or six years from now, it could really make a difference, so. And then, then it gets into the cost part of it. And the, the first, there's three kind of scenarios here, I'll be, I'll go through the, the detail of the top one, and then most of that's repeated down through the others, and I won't go through all that detail, but I, I did treat this as a kind of a full-blown bid-out, contracted-out process, so I included some mobilization, site prep layout, and site repair and seeding, and, you know, and potentially some of those things could be done in-house, that, but I did not take that assumption right now. There's some, there's some money in there, and then the fabric shade structure, you know, I have kind of developed my own way of approaching cost estimates over the years that I kind of like to try to look at a low and a high estimate. Low being, you know, if you have a good bidder, aggressive bidder, you might get those kind of numbers, but, you know, if you didn't, you might have some of these higher numbers and, and kind of work with that as a guiding post, you know, as, as we're talking through this. The reality is probably somewhere in between, most likely. So, as you can see, the 60-by-60 fabric shade structure, I showed that, and this is, this is the cost to have it fabricated and delivered, and installed. I showed separate costs there for footings, for that structure, and then I did show in all of these scenarios, I did put money in here for the tree planting, I showed those six large trees at $1,200 to $1,500 apiece with a, you know, these are big trees with a, with a big tree spade that's going to be take, required to move them, and then I showed you that, that other bank of trees is much less expensive, kind of boll and bird-lap kind of material. So the, all the general conditions and all the tree plantings are exactly the same in all these, the only difference then going down is really the cost of the structure. So you can see that high-low on the fabric shade structure with all those things in it was 82 to 108, 82,000 to 108,000, and then as we get into the 50-by-50 shade structure, the, that cost of that structure jumps up to an 80 to $90,000 range, and I did not plug in any masonry column wraps on this, trying to kind of keep that as sort of a lowest-cost permanent structure option. And that cost with these other things in here, you know, ran up to 123,000 to 144. And then the last one, which I imagine is probably not too much on the, on the radar here, would be the, the 60-by-60 to really maximize that shade and add the column wraps and all that, so it was kind of the, the full-blown package. Those costs got up to 147 to 177. So, now, there are so many different ways to break this down in terms of, you know, whether the trees are in there or not and all that, and I understand all that, and we can kind of work through what needs to be in there, what doesn't need to be in there, but that gives us a little bit of a, a framework to start from, I guess, so. That's where we're at now, but as far as acoustics, let me just touch on that real quickly. I did call Avant Acoustics in Lenexa, and they've done some work here for schools and do work all over the world, really, and talked to them a little bit about this, and they generally said, any sort of a fabric shade structure solution is not likely to cause too much of a problem. So there can be some reverberation of some of your higher frequencies, even with fabric, but it wasn't likely to be anything that was going to really be a problem. When you put a solid roof over it, it becomes a much different situation, particularly with that hip roof design that I showed in those earlier concepts, where you're really kind of directing that sound back down, if there's not some sort of acoustic continuation happening on the bottom side of that, it really could be a, a problem. You could really probably get a lot of complaints from the performers, especially. So what I did here, in kind of anticipating that we needed to talk about that, well, I just, I grabbed some pictures of structures that were similar in size, these are, these are all in that 50-by-50 range, and the obvious advantage is that, you know, they are, as you would expect with an aptitude, they're trying to help kind of get that sound going in the right direction. Now, the downside to this is that eve line is way up, so if, if you wanted to talk about something like this, the solution that I, that I kind of worked through with the acoustical engineer was, you know, you could take a solution like this, I would just say that something like this in terms of the cost itself is, is consistent with what I've already shown in the cost estimate for the 50-by-50 structure. So the, the, the shape of the roofline and its orientation really is not impacting that cost in any significant way. But what could happen here, if we, you know, if we wanted to, to talk about this, is this slower picture that shows that, that open truss across sort of starts to indicate what I think could be a solution, we could have a fabric, you know, a, a shade fabric addition to the front of that that could come down to that E5 through one, we'd have to make sure they're far enough out in front of the stage, you know, to accomplish that same goal that you saw earlier, but this, this, something like this could provide that weather cover, it could help not create acoustical problems, and then with some, some addition of fabric to a structure like this could, could accomplish all the goals of shade and, and good sound quality and, and all those other things. So I wanted to show this, because those prior studies really were not put together with much concern about acoustics, and as I was getting through that, I thought, you know, that this really needs to be a part of this discussion, so I wanted to bring that to you as well. So, with that, you know, any questions or thoughts or discussions, I'd be happy to.
Questions? I got just a couple, I mean, I, it's obvious why the 60-by-60 was less favorable in your eye, I mean, it just, proportionally, it just didn't look like it fit to me in that space, so it just, the biggest that we need, needs to be that, maybe something closer to that 50-by-50, or-
Yeah.
As kind of a maximum size, because when you started looking at the, it, it just looked like the proportions were way out of whack.
Yeah, and even a 50-by-50, I'll say, you know, we, we could, we could slide that forward five feet, you know, and line it up at the back edge of the stage and get that extra five feet of shade on the front. Now, no one's, no one's sitting down at ground level looking back at that, it's going to be able to really tell. That, that's going to be kind of an irrelevant thing in terms of, you know, looking, won't look weird, it'll look a little bit weird and plain, maybe, that it won't, it won't affect anything, but there's, yeah, some things we could do like that.
And I would also agree that whatever we're doing needs to give some consideration to acoustics, or we've kind of defeated the whole purpose. We made a nice shelter down there, but we haven't, we haven't done anything to enhance our performance- our performance space at all. Kevin, any questions?
Following up on that, I was kind of going down the same line, because fifty is basically the width of this room, just by counting ceiling tiles. And ten is going to be about the ceiling height, right? So that's about the seven-foot doors. So you can kind of envision that relative to this room except square, so it feels, I think it's going to feel low for that big of a
I don't disagree.
Of a structure.
Yeah.
And especially with the, you know, with the band up under it, you know, think about the door height, I think it's just, that is going to feel low. And so I think that's something to consider. Does it need to be square also? I think the width is important because you're trying to pick up the shade, but I don't think the depth is doing much for you. You're just, because you're casting the shade to the back, so you're almost better, say, you know, making it shorter front to back and keeping it forward. I think the tree idea is ultimately the way to go. That's where you're going to get your shade because it is low, and I, you know, you're the landscape architect, but I would suggest the thought of, you know, combining some evergreen into that planting as well to try to fill the gap around the trunk a bit, you know, in terms of creating some density in there. So, because, you know, you mentioned as the trees get older, it's only going to get better, but really not, because the tree only gets taller and some wider. But if you're trimming, you know, you've got to be careful about trimming the lower branches up, because those lower branches are going to gain it. So maybe a little bit of combination of your evergreen.
You're correct. I do think that is a consideration. I think you'd have to be trimming really quite high to really cause much of a problem. The reason being that this stage does sit lower, and that ground rises up, and not too far in the horizon there is the trees on the other side of it, the access to the ramp. So as the sun gets down there, that last ten or fifteen minutes, it's actually going to be kind of blocked by stuff that's kind of off in the distance, so.
Yeah, no, and I do think that second row back there, as those trees mature, really is going to, that's really going to create.
I agree. But I think, yes, an evergreen would be a great idea, absolutely.
Also enhances the viewing. I mean, they, so they're going to provide shade, like, last, well, last year, we had clusters of people in the shade on the right side, and not, didn't care about seeing the face of the performer, were more concerned about the shade that was there on the right side of the stage. So that also would, you know, for the earlier times when that's not casting shade toward the stage, would provide some protection and shade for people that are there to watch the concert.
Yeah. And I should point out, I did show some shadows on here again, based off of, these are actually thirty-foot tree shadows. This is only at six o'clock, so even at six o'clock, with a tree that tall, you're starting to get some benefit. So early in, you know, these early, the early performances, people might still be trying to huddle back away from the stage, but it won't be long before you get into seven, seven-thirty, they're going to be able to move down. Most people don't sit right against the stage anyway. Most people over the years have sat kind of in the middle of that space, so the trees like this, given some time to grow, they're going to do a real nice job of shading most of that bowl from seven or seven-thirty on, so.
I did initially have some concerns about your plannings along the path, as of being a competitor at the barbecue contest, but understanding that you take that into consideration.
Yes.
Now, I know that there was, the last couple, we had two rows of competitors, and I, actually, the trees probably wouldn't, there was another row of competitors in front of, were part of that space around that arc as well.
Yeah, there was a drive between those two rows.
Right. So I don't see it interfering with that either.
Right, right, yeah.
Another thought on, you mentioned with acoustic problems with that hip roof, and I was thinking of it with the permanent structure and that steel beam in the front would be, it's going to cause a problem with the shade issue, but if you went to more of a Gable style front on that, then, you know, your steel is going up and you aren't impeding that front view as well as dealing with the acoustics coming off the backside of that steel back towards the stage as well. So obviously, some thought would have to give to design, but, you know, you fight the issue of, we're trying to provide a shade. I don't like the idea of the drop panels in the front, because I think that, you know, now you're going to be down to about that door height, with this width, I think is even more out of proportion. I think that's going to drop the front of that down too much. I would love the idea of sponsor panels, but I think visually, functionally, it would be problematic.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but I will say that those panels don't have to go all the way across to accomplish the goal, because that sun is coming in from such an angle that that first image that I showed you, that twenty or twenty-five feet off the corner is really all we have to do.
About to the TV.
Yeah, and then we could have, you know, the full height of it, because that opening isn't relative to the stage anymore because of where the sun's at. So, yeah, I think an open web design, like you see for that, you know, that open web truss across the front of that really is probably, probably the right solution, because that's less impact on sound and, you know.
And it has a slope, like, the rivers are much shorter than the front.
Yes, 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 it does. The slopes back, and the one on top does, too. I didn't really explain that. Yeah, picture up on the right, you can see that slope, which, you know, is obviously helping acoustically to solve that. But, yeah, again, I kind of make sure that I've explained myself well. These, these solutions, by bringing that eve line up so high in the front, are creating a non-solution for shades, so we're going to have to at least bring some fabric down across that front to accomplish that.
And as we do those kinds of things, you know, you indicated pre-engineered structure in there, and every one of these little changes creates a custom, so it could bump the cost up a bit.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I actually tried to anticipate.
We need to get it right, if you're going to build it. I mean, if this is going to be a twenty-five, thirty-year structure, then get it right, too.
Yeah, and I did try to anticipate that in these costs, because it's interesting, most of these pre-engineered fabricated shade structures, they don't seem to go much above forty, forty by forty. So I anticipated some of that. By going even to fifty by fifty, you're sort of taking that pre-engineered, prefabricated concept, you're kind of stretching their comfort zone a little bit, and we can kind of talk about, you know, the best way to go about that. You know, I think there would be some advantages to actually, because it is a simple structure, of actually, you know, sort of designing that and just bidding out what we want, you know, get a structural engineer. I already talked a little bit about, you know, sort of the realities of spanning fifty feet and what that depth is, and that's kind of why I showed that. But I do think that would provide an opportunity to explore some of these details that I think are going to make it either good or really good, so, yeah.
All right.
Rob? A lot of the questions have been asked. As far as fabric versus the steel or that, what's longevity, lifespan of fabric, the maintenance, the replacement cost over how many ti- years?
Yeah, I think most of, in all, there's different answers on the fabrics, but I think the general answer is, most of these fabric shade structures, they're counting on that fabric lasting about ten to fifteen years. That's what you're going to get out of it.
And you do have to take it in.
Ideally, right. That's always going to be a recommendation.
Of the ten to fifteen would be take it down in the winter, put it back up?
Yeah, yeah. That would be a reasonable expectation. Now, replacing that is, I don't really know the answer to that, but just intuitively, I'm thinking that's probably going to be a cost of somewhere around ten or fifteen thousand dollars, you know, because you're not rebuilding the frame, you're not doing new fittings and all that. So there's costs, for sure, but that's probably somewhere in that range.
Kevin, any questions or comments?
No, I think most of them have been discussed. You know, I just, you know, all the concerts that I attended down there, especially the ones with the professional stage and sound, you know, they were crank-up fabrics, so, but most of the sound was placed on, you know, to the left front or the right front. So the acoustic piece of it was, the speakers were actually truly out in front of the stage. So if we choose to go with professional sound in the future, as we quoted there a couple times with lights and sound. But, no, I like some of the designs. I just don't, you know, I kind of, I kind of wonder if this is the right time to pull the trigger on it, but that's just my own thoughts.
Well, I think, I think my idea is, we'll still come up with a concept, and I would, I'm still thinking I will seek benefactors, corporate sponsors, some, I don't see this, I don't think this is part of our CIP at this time at all, so it would be a completely unfunded project. So we're just identifying the project, and then we're going to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
I definitely agree with all that, and, you know, and I'm sure Lori would like to be a part of it as well, because she's a big park fan, so, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Danny?
The only thing that I kind of would lean toward, toward the fifty, fifty by fifty, and I'm wanting to see a more permanent structure roof than the fabric. I've dealt with the fabrics myself here, and they're, of course, mine's only seventeen by twenty, but I take it down every fall and put it up every spring, and I get about, if I'm lucky, I get four years. But, and I'm buying a pretty healthy fabric, so, and with the wind and the stress in it during the summer, and the rains, and the elements beating down on it, the sun, and it's terrific shade that I, you know, that makes the space more livable. But I'm thinking we want to go ahead and go with a more permanent structure. And I don't think that, if we could change something to enhance the sound a little bit, but I'm, I'm like Kevin, I saw that when I was down there to the other concerts that I attended, of course, all their equipment was way out front. And, and then, and so, you know, as far as making the shelter that more acoustically, I think that wasn't really the idea. I know that Mayor, you know, I know what you're saying, too, there about having this thing acoustically a little bit better than just a shelter house. But that's my comments, Mayor. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Danny. So Mike, what do you think our next steps are?
Yeah, I think if we're comfortable moving, yeah, that's a good suggestion. I was gonna, I was gonna say, if we're, if we want to move forward, then maybe we engage Doug to come up with scope and fee for the rest of his work that would allow us to get it to the bidding stage. Go ahead and present this information to the park board, and then we come back with Doug's proposal to the council, and hopefully Laura would be here at that meeting, and then she would have the opportunity to give whatever input she has on the final design. It sounds like if everybody's kind of centering on the more permanent structure with the solid roof, and it's a fifty by fifty, and we love the tree plantings, I think that's probably enough to get a scope and fee proposal together to take the next step.
Can I add something to that? I think there's an interim step, and I totally agree with what you're saying about seeking a corporate underwriter, and I think it would be reasonable to have the ex-company pavilion here. But I think in doing that, we need essentially a marketing package, you know, a well-developed, a well-developed rendering and a plan that we, whoever "we" is, Mayor, can go to some organizations with and say, you know, we'd really like to see you be a partner in the community here, and here's a good way to, you know, to make an impact. But I think we kind of need that fundraising component as well, piece, that fundraising.
Yeah, we need the, yeah, we need the illustrative pictures.
Yeah, which would be a little different than our CDs, I mean, a little different than the bidding document.
Yeah, we would need to make sure that.
And just as a reminder, my current contract for this covers that. So I'm prepared to do that already, so, yeah.
You know, the front of the stage, you know, is, what was that? That's about a four-foot drop there in the very front of what we have down there now.
Two and a half, two to two and a half.
I know that one band, they put their information, and they just threw it across the front, and it hung down. But I'd like to see us utilize both sides of the sculpture down there and put a pole out on either side for, to run across a banner on each side, instead of hanging down in the middle of the stage. Do it on each side of the stage with a pole out there about twenty or thirty foot and attached to the building on the corner, and run it to that pole, and then have that as our advertising and our sponsorships. That way, it wouldn't be interfering with the entertainment, and it'd be off to the
Well, now, I think then the next step would be, let's get the marketing package together and come back here. Yeah, because, like I said, it seems like we're kind of aiming toward this.
That's right, back to the idea. I think we are, I think we have consensus that a permanent structure is what we think we want to pursue. I think the size, I think we've, you've steered us toward an appropriate size.
Okay.
So that's enough direction to finish out kind of the current concept.
Yeah, I think, I think I might be exploring some variations about that structure that I might want to send just for some feedback.
Right, if you want to need more feedback from Mike or anyone or myself, I would certainly be willing to.
Yeah, I'm intending to finish up with marketing material for you.
All right.
So, yeah.
And we'll get Lori's input, you know, as he's doing that, we'll reach out to Lori, see if she has any thoughts.
Okay. All right.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
All right, moving on. Item B, consider final plat for Arbor Ridge third plat.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. What's happened for you is the third plat for Arbor Ridge. As you recall, this project actually started in two thousand and five, and Don Parr took it over and completed phases two, and now we're ready for phase three. Just would like to, we went through this in detail with the planning commission, and they are recommending approval to the city council for accepting easements and rights away. Some of the key items that we discussed at the planning commission, one thing I just wanted to point out, that the phases were reversed from the original development plan, which was completed in two thousand and five. So Don elected to build Laramie Street as phase two and then have the phase three on, would be his phase two, and then phase two on the original development plan is now his phase three. Also, upon review, Don elected actually to reduce a few of the lots in phase three. Felt that the original development plan had several lots that were pretty difficult to build on, and it was better to make some of the lots bigger and make a more appropriate or easier build without as many piers and Phil involved. So there's a slight reduction in the amount of lots from the original development plan, and was being proposed here in Arbor Ridge three. And then finally, Eighty-Sixth Street becomes a cul-de-sac, would be renamed Eighty-Fifth Terrace, and the two other southern cul-de-sacs are slightly modified to fit the ground terrain. We did go through the technical requirements that we review with staff. Mike has also been reviewing the engineering documents, and I believe we've got those approved and signed and ready to go. So really, this is the final step as far as giving a green light on this. I would also add that we are really running out of building the lots in DeSoto, so this is something that not only, you know, community development is looking forward to, but our building official would like to see the momentum continuing that we have going with a lot of the new homes being constructed in DeSoto. So with that, I will stand for any questions you may have.
Questions?
Yeah, I got, I got one on, so for our comprehensive plan for sewer extension, if it were to go south from here, does go through this Arbor Ridge development, right? Sewers would be extended down kind of through this area, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So have we made, have we given thought to where the provision would be for that utility easement? Because I do see, you know, there is a utility easement coming down from, down to lots one fifty-three, that it needed to be provided for in Did it needed to be provided for in this plat, like along lot one forty-four, for example?
Let me find lot one forty-four.
Down, all the way down right there.
Oh, here.
Because you got the utility easement leading down to that. But, because I don't know how that piece is going to be planted to the west of that.
The piece west of that's going to be open, it's that creek channel. So it would be reserved out of that space.
Where, where would the sewer corridor then be given, not putting it in the stream? Or will it actually come down, say, between lots?
Yeah, you see, the sewers will be all the way to that, be the northwest corner of where Mike's cursor is right now. That's where the sewers turn and go back east.
So is it between lots one forty and one thirty-nine go up to the new plat, not that one? There's a drainage easement down through there. I, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where do we make.
It's gotta go, it's gotta go along the one forty-four. I mean, the creek is still going, following that, that long line.
Should we have had a utility easement along the west side of one forty-four to accommodate a future sewer opportunity going south?
So actually, as the public improvements laid out, the, some of the sewers that even serve lots one fifty through fifty-three are actually west of a plat boundary. And so we're going to get a separately dedicated easement for, for those.
In the open space?
In the open space, yeah. I will mention, and, and you know, of course, so similarly, that last manhole sits about, and then kind of about right here before it turns east.
To serve the subdivision.
To serve the subdivision.
And will that be a manhole that would be tied into if in the event sometime way down the road, sewers were to continue south?
Right, so this, this would not be the main draw that gives service, sewer service all the way up to K-ten. That's, those sewers are going to go up this creek draw. This is the one that actually has more.
Okay, it's on the other side of it.
It's on, it's.
The one we're talking about really turns and goes straight east.
Okay, so the sewer that's feeding this new phase three would not be part of that.
No, that tie-ins all the way up here and that line would have to come down up this creek to get up to the K-tening and Kill Creek. But still, this, this one, there is some ground, just a, just a small piece just south of the, of the subdivision here that might be served someday by this one. But it wouldn't be the main drainage area.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't get in a situation where we have to then go back and get an easement in the future.
Yeah.
Very good.
Good.
Any other questions? Or motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the easements and the right of way for Arbor Ridge third plat as presented tonight.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion has carried.
Okay, thank you, Brad. Item C, consider proposal for city hall server replacement.
Yes, Council, we have fifteen thousand dollars in the two, twenty twenty budget for a new server here at city hall. It actually won't be a replacement, we're going to keep the old one as, as some backup storage and as storage for a, a particular program that's used by the parks in Iraq. But the current server is almost added storage capacity, which makes our IT people real nervous because they tend to get unstable. And we've experienced some of that even this year when they reach their storage capacity limit. So we did, we, we, we definitely want to stay with a Dell server. That was, that's what our old server is, that's what all the desktop units are. Our IT people are recommending stay with, staying with that brand for consistency's sake. We were able to get two different bids on the server that our IT folks specked out for us. One's from Kelcon, Kelcon is essentially there are our IT people, our consultants that come in and fix printers and whatever. They were able to get a bid on the purchase of the server itself. There's two options they gave us, one is a single core with a little less memory. And, and another is a dual processor with, with more memory and RAM memory. We'd like to go with the, with the beefier spec on that. So Kelcon's price is about eleven thousand for the option one and about eighteen thousand for option two. We also have a government supply contract arrangement with Dell. So straight from Dell, it's cheaper. So the, the, the option one, which is the, the better spec server, straight from Dell's about fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars. In addition to that cost, we're going to have to have our IT people come in and set it up. And each desktop unit's going to have to be set up to connect and talk to the new server. So that price is the same no matter which option we go with. So what we're asking for is approval on option one, which is the beefier spec on the server. And then the, the labor cost from our IT consultant sixty-four sixty. So that totals twenty thousand, six eighty-nine. So there's a suggested motion in the staff report if you care to take that recommendation.
Questions for Mike? So what usable storage capacity will it end up, not total, but usable? As you mentioned mirrored.
Uh, it's four point eight terabyte, I mean, it's, yeah, I don't.
Because if it's four one point twos and they're mirrored, that's two point four usable storage.
Yeah, so the existing one is two and the new one I've told is about the same. So that would make sense. So this four, you don't just double the mirrored.
So are you gaining a whole lot more storage on this one then? Or just?
Well, we're keeping the existing one.
Okay.
So this is all, yeah, we still have all that. The, the existing ones, it's only about five years old. So it's not like it's, you know, so old that it's going to fail and we need to replace it. We're, it's just full. So we'll keep it on, it'll still be there.
Okay. Any other questions? Or motion?
Mayor, I'm in support of it, but I, I, I can't see the screen big enough to read Mike's motion. So if somebody else has to pick work there, I'll, I'll second.
I'll move to authorize the city administrator to purchase the new server for city hall from Dell in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred, twenty-nine and thirty-five cents and to accept the installation proposal from Kelcon Technologies in the amount of sixty-four thousand, or not sixty-four thousand, six thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, motion carried, Mayor.
Okay. Item D, consider bids for city hall security improvements.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What we have before you on this agenda item is a continuation of our twenty eighteen facility study. If you recall, when we completed that, the initial goal, so we examined leases and spaces and come up with a phased plan for potential expansion to city hall. One of the things that also came out of the study was recognizing the need for some additional security and to create some access points. Provide more concise access points, we just didn't have so many entries and exits for people to basically to wander around city hall unchecked. We've been through the process, I didn't want to have to go through the whole plan again. But we did take this out for a bid, something Jay and I have been working on now pretty much since the conclusion of, or when council accepted the initial facility study in twenty eighteen. And we had actually a fair amount of bidders, actually had quite a few people come out and look at the property, which was nice. Also had to land out Nate Johnson several times. I think some people actually wanted to get up and look above the panels and see where the vents and HVAC systems worked. So I real feel, feel real confident in all the bids as far as their ability to do the job and understand what the project is all about. With that, we got a pretty good price from Edmore Construction. Don't know much about them, but living in Gardner for many years, actually ninety-four, when I moved there, Edmore was one of the companies that was in Gardner at that time, Gardner was four thousand people. So they've certainly been around for quite some time. And I have heard some good things about them, just anecdotally, just like I said, living in Gardner for many years. So with that, I will stand for any questions you may have. This, all this project also, based on our budget, every once in a while you get pretty lucky. Our architect charges about twelve thousand dollars and then the bid price was one oh seven. So we just came within, you know, a few bucks of nailing the budget estimates. So that worked out rather well.
Yeah, you're aware, it's a CIP project for this. And because it was already planned, there's no chance of COVID funding to.
Yeah, that caught us right off the top. Yeah. We shouldn't have planned it. Questions for Brad?
I assume it's just a typo in the way you put the table together, but I assume they really aren't charging a hundred grand for mobilization.
That's, you know, that's what their bid said.
Yeah.
We need to. We need, we need to ask him if that was just a discrepancy and we'll, we'll clear that up.
Well, confirm how we're paying mo, you know. If we're making mobilization as a percent of completion or if we're, you know.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll, we'll get that clear.
It was not a typo, it was.
That was, that, that caught my eye as well.
I did.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Or motion?
I'll make a motion and we accept a bid for Edmore Construction, a hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred dollars plus a ten percent contingency.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, motion carried.
Good. Item E, discuss possible code revision to accommodate habitat wildlife preservation projects within the city.
Yes, Council.
Patrick, would you flip your mic up and on, make sure, since we have a crowd, let's make sure they can all hear us good.
Thank you, Patrick Reeve, city attorney. And just to briefly introduce this item, I did mention at the last meeting, so you guys would have an opportunity to go look at the site if you wanted to do that. But this came about, our code enforcement officer did receive some complaints and upon investigating the property, what the owner did present him with some paperwork indicating that this was a state-sponsored project. And Walter did believe that that sort of took it out of our ability to enforce. So at some point, I was asked to take a look at this. And, and in talking with Andy Friesen, the, from Department of Wildlife and Parks, who he's here, concluded certainly this is, the fact that there's a state project does not preclude the city from enforcing its existing ordinance. But in talking to Mr. Friesen, and sorry, Andy, I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, he indicated a desire to address the council, just to at least let you know about this program that this project is part of. So, so that's, that's what we're here about tonight. I, I don't think there's much debate that, that the, the area would be considered in violation of our ordinance, our existing ordinance. Essentially, our existing ordinance presumes that if you have grass and weeds that exceed twelve inches in height, then you're presumptively in violation of the ordinance. And obviously, the area we're speaking of is much higher than that as you could see in the photos that I provided in the packet. So I, I did try to get all the interested parties, let them know that we would be discussing this. And so I do believe the, the owner of the property in question is here, Mr. Friesen's here. And then we have several neighbors, I believe, from the area that would like to just hear what you have to say about this and, and how, what the plan is to move forward. I did include in the packet an ordinance to amend the code only from the, the standpoint of the, given the COVID, and I understand there are a lot of people interested. I just thought if it was the council's desire to go the route of amending the ordinance or amending the city code, that if, if that was something you wanted to do, you would have the, the ability to do that so as not to, you know, require everybody to come back next meeting to see, to see what, what you were going to do. So if you were to take no action, then we would simply give instruction to Walter to reengage the property owner, to rectify the code violation. So that's all I have, I'm open to answering any questions.
All right, any questions for Patrick?
Yeah, just one, Patrick, it is, can this, instead of amending our deals, can they offer a special use permit for wildlife habitat for just a period of time where he would have to come back before it and renew it? Is that a possibility or is that not?
Not under our existing regulations. The, the weeds come under a specific state statute that is more aimed at nuisances. So, you know, that same statute, that's where we get the environmental code, the, the code on weeds, the code on junk cars. So this doesn't come under the zoning laws at all. But certainly if, if you want it, you know, the proposed amendment I put in your packet would just have you approve it and then, you know, certainly the council could retract its approval at any time if it felt like it no longer fit. But if, if you wanted to have like a, a yearly review or, you know, something more in line with like a special use permit process, that's something we could input into the city code. But it wouldn't be anything the planning commission would take up. It would strictly be something the city council would weigh in on.
Okay, thanks.
So if we don't have any more questions for Patrick, I guess I'd like to hear from Mr. Friesen. If you had a presentation you wanted to step forward and, or just some remarks you want to share. Would invite you to do that now.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Andy Friesen, I'm district wildlife biologist with Kansas Wildlife and Parks. I don't have anything specifically put together. I've worked with Mr. Hake on this habitat project. He actually has a presentation that I think he submitted to you folks prior to this evening's.
Oh, did you email it?
I emailed it.
Okay, then I've got it, I'll pull it up.
Basically, this was an agreement with Mr. Hake to, to install some pollinator habitat on his property. In essence, we cross shared with state funds from, from hundreds and so forth to fund his project. Basically, he has a wild forb plot, wild flower plot on his property that's been very well manicured and taken care of. The idea is to provide habitat for bees and butterflies and that's what this habitat is, is essentially doing. I have a, I have his contract and so forth, I stand for questions.
Uh, quick, just a quick question. So is the, the status of the property now or the, the growth now, that's the end result, you're certain?
Well, it, it's, it's a process. He went from a cool season standard grass, which is like the manicured lawn fiskus that you have most of the mowing. you have most of the mowing. It's a transition process to get these wildflowers and forbs and grasses established. Actually, in his particular plan, we backed off the grasses a little bit. So he only has three varieties of grass in his specific sand that we, sand that we've actually co-shared for. Majority of his wildflowers and forbs, and it's a process. It's a transition. You can't go from the cool season, short manicure, monoculture stand to this variety of diverse plants. It's gonna take a process. It's gonna be a three to four year process. The first year, a lot of those grasses, the, the grasses are establishing a root base. So basically, what we see that first year is a propagation of wildflowers and forbs. And that's based off of then, you know, weather events, rain, moisture, things and so forth. It's really essential at this particular point in time, the whole crux of this plan was to provide pollinator nectar species for bees and butterflies. And as a monitor migrating south now, if Mr. Haake is required to go in and mow down that material, he's taking off all that habitat that the state co-shared to get established. And so it's kind of a, you know, it's a negative type of thing.
Okay.
And in reference to his property, he's kind of gone out of his way to, you know, manicure all the way around it. His, his materials aren't infringing, to my knowledge, aren't infringing over on the, the neighbor's property. There, there's nothing in his stand that's a noxious weed. And I know it becomes kind of a part of the semantics here and so forth, but, you know, from a wildlife standpoint, weeds are beneficial, even noxious weeds. I mean, if you go out on the landscape now and I work with various landowners, even the thistle plants out there right now, pretty much every one of those plants is gonna have a beer butterfly on it. Now, the thistle's a noxious weed, but it does provide wildlife benefiter habitat.
What about ragweed? What good is ragweed?
Ragweed's good. It's, it's, I know it bothers a lot of our allergies, but it's a, it's a tremendous plant for, for doves. There's a lot of seeds that are produced. I mean, in a sense, even poison ivy is beneficial for wildlife. So it's one of those deals where you, you, you try to enhance wildlife habitat, you pick a species, you're trying to target, but in doing so, you're also gonna maybe also enhance a suite of organisms that maybe aren't so desirable. A lot of my plans center around coil management, getting the native grasses and forbs established are good for coil, but it also does provide, you know, habitat for a whole suite of other organisms. You can't just pick and choose one specific species. But his plan primarily was a pollinator project. And he has a diverse stand of, of flowers, wildflowers, forbs, weeds, whatever you want to call it. There's twenty-four different species of, of plants in there that are designed to bloom at different stages. And anytime you go in there and try to cut down one of those flower, flowers, it's attracting the insects, that's working counterproductive to the office of the program. And those flowers are set to bloom, you know, spring through late fall.
Okay.
Um, I had, I just, you know, I didn't know what was all going to be required or needed. I was hoping I wasn't gonna have to, you know, present a whole lot, but I do have the, the seating sheet of what actually is in the planting there. And it's all nitty plants of Kansas. It's not anything that's, you know, exotic or invasive or anything of that nature. And in his stand, just the manipulation and the adjustment and altercations to the soil and to the, to the landscape there, he has some other beneficial materials coming up in there that we didn't specifically plant. So the ragweed, the mare's tail, things like that, they're not noxious weeds, but that's a benefit of that soil disturbance that was being suppressed by that cool season grass that we kept, that was kept manicured over a period of time. So he's getting the benefit of not only the twenty-four species that we planted specifically and co-shared for, he's also getting the benefit of other things that are propagating.
Okay. Any, any questions from the council of Mr. Friesen while he's here?
We talked about being transitional, so is that the final, what it's gonna look like in four or five years?
No, it, it's gonna, it's gonna change over time. Each year's gonna be a little bit different. Primarily right now, like you said, you're getting a lot of wildflowers i- in the mix. It's an early stage, successional habitat that next year, based off the chemistry and so forth, different flowers are gonna bloom and, 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 and flower at different times. And so it's, it's not gonna look the same every year. And part of the management on these wild forbs and grasses is, from a, from a wildlife standpoint, we advocate a periodic burning, pershod fire, because that was in the nat- natural system of the Tall Grass Prairie. I don't know if that's permissible or whatever, but that, that fire burning in early, early springtime, late winter, early springtime frame kind of cleans up the material, puts a boost back into the system so those flowers are able to propagate and the grasses are able to grow over time. So as you progress through the growing season, late in the growing season now, things should look kind of tall and, you know, pretty, pretty conducive type wildlife habitat. You look in the foreground there, the nice manicured lawn, you know, that, that's not wildlife type habitat. The stuff back behind it is, is conducive type habitat. So it, it's gonna be a transition. It's not gonna look the same every year.
Will it draw other habitat that a neighborhood may not want?
Potent, potentially, but, potentially, but it would be habitat, you know, that's gonna, you know, it's not gonna be in someone, you know, that's habitat that's, the creatures aren't gonna be in somebody else's yard, they're gonna be over Mr. Haake's yard. If he's willing to, you know, if he's willing to man. And the thing is, like I said, he, you know, he didn't plant this all the way around his whole house. It's, it's in an area that's, you know, very well kept. And to be honest with you, I work with a lot of landowners and a lot of folks don't actually do the habitat work, so I don't have a real high success rate of habitat implementation across, across my district. But I like to see the good habitat, and this is a major success story, although it's small acreage, but a lot of these bee and butterfly pollinator plots are small. We work with school districts on planting pollinator plots. It's, it's a, it's a huge flower garden, in a sense, is what he has.
Can I just ask one question, Andy? Is it, and I only ask it because definitely the amendment that I prepared would not address this, and I'm not even sure if the city could authorize him burning this off. Is that a critical part of the project or could?
No, we, we would like to see that, prefer to see that in, in a rural setting where you can do those types of things, that it's not something that's gonna be essentially required. There's gonna be some other manages that we could do. I mean, there's a timeframe for, for mowing, which would be in that early stage, infancy stage in the spring to knock back some of the, some of the materials to allow the sun and the moisture to penetrate. But in a mature stand like this, this is not the time to go in and, and knock the materials down. So the mowing could be substituted for burning. We prefer, uh, burning. You can't always do that, due to smoke drift and things of that nature. But it's a huge management tool.
Patrick, I was just gonna say, the statement, you know, as long as, as long as he goes out to the fire district and informs them and, and makes the proper permit request and then conditions are favorable for it, they, they would probably let him burn it.
And as I understand it, Mr. Haake's using this as a, as a, as a project with his daughter, as a science project. It's not, you know, it's something that's well thought out and not just kind of, you know, done off the cuff, and it's definitely not due to any type of neglect. I mean, he's gone above and beyond to create that situation out there. And I, you know, I, if Mr. Haake, I think he has a presentation. If anybody has any more questions for me, I'm more than happy to try to address them the best I can.
Can we ask a question?
That's the mayor's.
Sure. Yeah.
My question is.
Do you want to address for the record?
My name is Patty Williams. And my question is, what guidance or communication do you have with potential participants in this program about adhering to existing local ordinances, regulations before they initiate their project?
I, I visit with, I visit with them and I take it in, in good faith that, that, you know, where they're located, it's okay to do the, the habitat type of modifications that we're doing. So I, that's, you know, I, I also go off the same office when people are calling about, you know, deer damage i- issues, city boundaries. So I just, I, I take in good faith that what folks are expressing or coming to me with are, are things that are acceptable. I mean, by all means, I wouldn't have gone to the extent of what I did if I realized it was something that wasn't gonna be permissible or, 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 or okay.
Okay, so the program doesn't require a signed form or anything by the participant that says they're aware of existing local regulations in order to participate with the program?
No, I just haven't, I did, he, he signs off on a contract that I, I provide for him with, with the co-share money. There's nothing that's, that's, to that extent, because a lot of times I'm dealing with more, you know, diverse habitats across, you know. I'm in the city some, I'm out the city limits, and to be honest with you, a lot of times I don't know where city boundaries start and stop, and so I just kind of take it in good faith where, where folks are located, so.
I, I, I'm carrying the burden rest solely on the participant to understand rules and regulations that they're looking for.
Yeah, that's not something that I, I don't get into all of that specifically, no.
Mr. Haake, do you want to come up and run through your presentation you sent Mike? If there was anything you wanted to add while?
Yeah.
To the PowerPoint or whatever it is?
I counted.
Yeah, well, whatever you want to do.
Thanks, Andy. Thanks.
So Mayor and City Council appreciate the time here, citizens as well, be able to take you through this project. So, and you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So, you know, I think as we've, we've heard here a little bit tonight, you know, and certainly I've become very familiar with the city ordinance, and I think, you know, a couple of things that I key on there is really around the spirit and intent. When we think about spirit and intent of an ordinance or a law, you know, it's really about neglect, okay? And it's about the person that just abandons a property and those types of things. And certainly, I think as Andy alluded to, this is something that's very well thought out, that we put a tremendous amount of effort into. And I'll even go back a little bit. My wife and I, and, and my wife's back there, my son and, and my daughter, and, you know, we moved to DeSoto about six years ago. I lived here in the nineties for a while and loved it. And so we got out of Alatha and went and moved to a smaller town, you know, those values, things like that. Someone was wanting to play sports. I didn't want to be in Alatha where, you know, if you're not playing on five club teams and stuff, you got no chance. So he's out here and plays on the football team and, and all that, so. So when we moved out here, you know, the property we bought was owned by the original owners and the whole perimeter of the property was covered in half-dead Scotch pines. I think you guys remember all those. Poison ivy, thistle, just nasty, okay? And I spent three years cleaning all that up and getting all that out by hand, had poison ivy in my eyes every winter and got it all taken care of. And then went back and replanted with white pines to kind of create that shield and that screen. And, you know, as part of the enhancement of the property, you know, my daughter and I think, you know, kids today, they're pretty concerned about a lot of things. Certainly, the environment's a big deal, and this is something that she brought to me and said, you know, this is something that's really important to me. I was a biology and chemistry major in college. We have a farm that we manage for wildlife in central Missouri. And so this was something that we really connected on. And I think most of you, if you have kids, would recognize that as they get older, it's harder and harder to find those connection points. So here we are, and this is us, and a lot of our adventures are sort of space camp down at our farm, you know, Colorado, hiking the mountains. So, you know, this is kind of our connection. So if you go to the next slide. Whoop, there you go. So one thing I think that we really connected on and talked a lot about was really the plight of bees themselves. And, you know, bees are pretty cool, right? There's, everybody thinks, well, a bee's a bee. Well, there's four thousand species in the United States of bees. You know, a bee has to travel fifty-five thousand miles to make one pound of honey, okay? So, you know, but what's not fun and what's not cool about bees is there's a serious decline in the population of bees. And a lot of it has to do with chemicals that we spray on our yards, those types of things, and they have a lot to do with habitat fragmentation, habitat loss. As these animals are traveling that far, the farther they have to go, it's like if you're running a marathon and nobody gives you water till the end, like you're probably not gonna make it, right? So this is about providing those pit stops along the way as these bees are moving around. And about two-thirds of the food that we eat has to be pollinated by bees. Grains are the only things that are essentially pollinated by wind. So if you like oatmeal, the future without bees is probably pretty good for you. But if you like vegetables and you like beef and all those things, you know, bees are a pretty important part of it. So you can go ahead and go to the next, next string. The second part of it, and really the kind of ancillary component of this, is around Tall Grass Prairie. You know, there's about one percent left of the Tall Grass Prairie that was around in this area today. And I think Andy mentioned a little bit, a lot of those plants that are kind of coming up that we didn't necessarily put there are things that have been in the ground waiting for us to not spray Roundup on it and Pre-Emergent and do all of those things. And when you give them that chance, here they come, especially in a drought year. So you can go to the next slide. So you talk about a plan. So this is really the plan as we have it laid out, and you have to excuse my, my weak attempt at poetry here, but I thought for continuity's sake, it would make some sense. So really in year one, you're really determining the site and you're getting it out there. We worked with specific species, there's hundreds and hundreds of species we could have put out there, but we chose specific ones because of their bloom cycles and beneficial, beneficial, you know, beneficial for wildlife. So we prep the area, we seed it, I did all that by hand, that all got done. That was all last year. So this started in, in, in spring of 2019. And it's been going, went all last year, the spring I mowed it and removed all the overburden as I'm supposed to, to let the light and heat and moisture back down to the soil. And now it's come up this year. Last year, I saw about four different species of wildflowers. This year, we've got about twenty-two. And so, you know, really happy with the performance of, of the plot this year. And you really gotta kind of let it grow, as Andy said this year, and that's where we're at right now. Now, look, if I'm being honest, I don't like the fact that it's twelve feet tall, okay? I don't like the fact that it's kind of like falling out of the part I'm trying to mow. I go back and trim around the edge, anything that falls over, and as best I can, and, and try to keep it as confined in that area as I can. And so, you know, my hope is, and Andy and I were talking, I'm kind of ready for year three, so I can knock down some of this taller stuff, and I want to get a little bit more grass growing. So next year, and you can see there in year three is where you really start to mow, and that sets back that cool season grass or burn. If it's permissible, that's really the best, because a lot of those seeds need heat to germinate, and a lot of the weeds, so to speak, or less desirable plants, they can't tolerate the heat. So that's why a burn is so much more preferable. And then in year four and beyond, you kind of go with the flow. The thing starts to take over. As that grass comes in, it creates a denser mat and start to choke out some of the, the more leggy plants in there. And ultimately, we'll oversee that with native grass, and it will start to look more like what you think. If you want to go to the next slide, please. Oh, sorry. So this is our spirit and intent, okay? And this is what this should look like in an ideal setting. This is what we started out with. Now, does it look like that today? No. But I have vision and, you know, I see beyond what it looks like today. I mean, the bottom line is, it doesn't look pretty right now. And I'm not here to debate, you know, what's beautiful, what's not, right? It's like art, what's not art? I don't know. But what I do know is, if we get to that point, I think that's something most people could probably get behind, okay? But it is going to take us some time. So, you know, my ask is, if you go to the next slide, please. My ask is, is that we allow the project to continue, that, and we are willing to help create a solution that can allow this to persist without, you know, make, doing undue harm to people around. And, you know, hopefully we can think about solutions. You know, again, I mean, there's, I drive around DeSoto and drive around the neighborhood, a lot of things I don't like, you know? I got a guy down the road that's got broken down Dodge Dakota in his yard, and he's mowing around at this point, okay? I don't think that's great, but I'm not necessarily dragging him in here. You know, I've got, there's a bunch of noxious weeds, you know, poke weed and everything growing in certain places, like the one neighbor's dog runs out to the edge of the yard because it's got an invisible fence, you think it's gonna run out in front of you all the time. Like, I don't like that either. But, you know, here I am. So my appeal to you, and, and really to the group, is give us a chance to do this thing here. With all the stuff going on in the world that's nasty and terrible, you know, I'm trying to do something I think's pretty positive here and hope the council and that the other group will give us a chance to do that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Andy. Before you sit down, can I ask a question?
Who? Oh, yes, sir.
Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
So going back to the slide where you showed kind of an end result. One, have, have you looked at or used some model projects like this where you believe that this is the end game as opposed to grabbing a cool picture off the internet? So one, that's a question to you, and then also for the gentleman from the state, if you could kind of respond in kind.
So let me answer first. So my family bought their first land in central Missouri in nineteen sixty-four for a dollar an acre. They became a model of wildlife management in central Missouri. My dad bought his place in nineteen eighty that's adjacent to that. And then we've continued to add property to that now. We have restored approximately thirteen hundred acres from what was a subsistence farm, you know, overburdened land in central Missouri. That's not a very rich country down there in the hills. And they planted corn so much in places that the grass wouldn't grow. And so we have gone back in through selective harvest and completely restored the oak ra- oak ratios and get the right diversity in the timber. We've restored all the prairies to native grass and got rid of invasive species, even the ones that the state told you to plant like autumn olives and cherysia lesbidae years ago. And so this is similar to what it looks like at our farm now. And so I do have technical expertise in this area and practical experience on how to do it. And then with Mr. Friesen's expertise, because mine being in central Missouri is a little bit different, but practically, it's the same thing, you know? And our partnership, yes, I do believe it can look that way. And I'll tell you, two years from now, the things, I won't let it go that long, okay? I need it to get to that, and I think I can get it to that. But again, we're not, this isn't, you know, a snap of the fingers thing, so. Andy, I don't know if you had anything to that.
I would concur with what Mr. Hake is saying, that end result there, it's a hurry-up-and-wait process. You have to be patient with this. That's showing primarily the wildflowers and forbs. There's not many grasses showing in that particular stand, and I don't know what's in it. His particular mix only has three species of grass in it. It's a phytosgrama, little blue stem, and western wheatgrass, and those three species aren't going to grow very tall to begin with. So the grasses are not going to get tall in that, in the mix that he has. He has primarily a wildflower mix. But it's this transition phase. You can't go from the front of that picture to the back of that picture in one growing season. Now, will his stand do that? I can't say it will. Each stand's a little bit different, chemistry, moisture, but the potential's there. That's not a erroneous photograph.
Thank you for your question. Are there any other questions? I'll go.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just one other note, and I already told Mr. Hake that, you know, if you were to entertain or approve the amendment to the code, he would still have to go through the process that's called for in the amendment, which would be, you know, putting forth to you a plan, indicating what efforts he made to explain what he's trying to do to the neighbors. So that plan that's laid out in the ordinance, that's something he would still need to do. And then this would ultimately come back to you for approval or disapproval. So, just wanted to note that.
So Mayor, can I ask one more question, Mr. Hake? Mr. Hake, can I get? So, kind of following on the lady from the audience's question about knowing the codes that's in place and kind of how we got to where we are.
Right.
What was your thinking or what was your interpretation of the code, of the existing city code ordinances, that got us to where we are and that we're essentially in violation of the mowing ordinance?
Well, so, I think, when I stated initially, it's about the spirit and intent, right? Again, abandoned properties and no care taken, and I'm like, well, basically, I'm taking a lot of care on this thing. I'm mowing around the perimeter. It's not kind of running unfettered. And so, essentially, it's like, it's basically a big flower bed. Now, it's different flowers than, you know, the roses or peonies or whatever somebody might otherwise plant, and it's native. So, you know, my spirit and intent was, it's basically a big flower bed. Because, you know, I guess, you know, and this is potato thought or whatever, but, you know, if I were to put a fence around it or have like rocks around the edge, like, at some point, when does it become a flower bed versus, you know, it's like you're supposed to have grass in there? It's like, you know, up on the corner, there's a gentleman whose whole front yard is like vinca vines and, you know, just stuff and pastas. I mean, it's just like, I mean, it looks like the woods. And, you know, and I'm like, and what I've seen driving around, you know, I've seen a lot of things that are, you know, certainly not, not to the extent that mine is, but it's, you know, it's stuff that's similar. So, you know, again, really, you know, did I call Patrick? No. Did I come to this body and ask for permission? No. But, you know, I went into it with good intention and what I thought my interpretation of the ordinance was, so. All right, thank you.
If I can just make one comment on, it might surprise some people, but actually, the weed ordinance is not, it does not emanate from sort of a cosmetic base, the statute that, the state statute that the weed ordinance is authorized by actually gets at the creation of quote-unquote nuisance. So the statute is based on preventing heavy growth that, you know, causes rodents and in a residential neighborhood. So it's, and I agree, most times, it is what you mentioned, but technically speaking, this weed ordinance comes from preventing rodents and, you know, things that are
Right.
Quote-unquote not wanted in a, you know, neighborhood, a city set up.
Well, with all due respect to kind of in our neighborhood, my acre and a quarter isn't this magnet for wildlife. I'm surrounded by Cedar Creek Valley on one side, Kill Creek Valley on the other, up by the red barn, they got a whole valley and all that. I mean, the, I've got raccoons that have broken into my shop trying to get it. Like, all that wildlife and stuff exists in the air. And all the rattlesnakes along Cedar Creek or on the Kill Creek back in there, I mean, that stuff was all there. And so, this 1.25 acres, like, all of a sudden, it's like, all the everything from 100 miles around, like, man, we got to get to this guy's yard? Like, that's not happening, okay? I mean, all the raccoons and deer and everything else all lives down, you know? Frankly, I'm Mr. Nolan's house and all that along that whole side along the creek. That's where they all live, and I've enjoyed feeding them and watching them come up there into my yard, frankly. Those are really big bucks down there, believe it or not. But, but anyway, you know, that's the draw for, that's where all the animals live, okay? Living in, living in my yard with cars and dogs and everything else, like, this isn't a national park, okay? It's 1.25 acres of pollinator habitat, and certainly, you know, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily this, you know, again, in the spirit and intent of what you're talking about, I don't think it's necessarily doing that. So, okay.
All right. Couple questions still.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Happy to have them all.
So, and this may be for the Kansas end. So is a transitional period or the grass is likely to be as tall next year?
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Not necessarily, no. The idea is, in the spring, those cool season grasses, I mean, if you're going to go 12 feet tall, you better get started, right? So the idea is, is in the spring, we want to mow those down because then those late-season grasses and other things will start to get more of a head start. And in the woods and in nature, things get a little bit of a race, right? So if you get this tall, then I got to try to get this tall. So by knocking those other ones down earlier in the year, we believe that the overall height should decrease to some extent. Now, I think if you drive on the highway, you can see some of those, the really tall ones, those are Maximilian sunflowers. And so if you drive down the highway right now, you can see some of them, but they're much more sporadic. That thing's like solid Maximilian sunflowers, which, again, I'm not thrilled with either. I want 27 species kind of allot, and that one's kind of taken over a little bit. So knocking that down should make, there'll be some that tall, but it won't be, hopefully, a solid standard. Andy, would you?
I would definitely concur with what Mr. Hake's saying. I have a plot of native grass and forbs at my house outside of Baser, and just luck of the draw, a couple of years in the past, my Maximilian sunflowers have really taken off and gone, and kind of same situation as Mr. Hake's. This past spring, I went in there just kind of with the hand weed whacker, and I was knocking down that Maximilian sunflowers a couple of times in the early growing season in the spring. It's set back right now to where it's nowhere near what it was in the past. It's only several feet tall, and the grasses have really propagated and taken off. Now, in my stand, I've got the taller grasses, which, to reiterate, Mr. Hake doesn't have tall grasses. It's primarily going to be small flowers. The majority of the material in his stand right now was the extra beneficial stuff that was just there that just kind of took off. So we realize now we need to do some management on those things that we didn't, we weren't expecting to be in the mix. So, yeah, we can work on knocking down some of that tall forb stuff, and it necessarily won't look exactly that way next year. And each plot's a little bit different. Like I said, it's based off of soil chemistry, moisture, so, yeah, there's, it's not going to necessarily look like that next year. If that answers your question.
Hey, a two more.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Anita Nolan. He said you have a Baser.
Mm-hmm.
Do you live in the city limits?
No, ma'am, I'm outside the city limits of Baser, on a five-acre plot, while I'm kind of doing some research stuff, kind of helping my job.
So, two other questions. And part of this, one of the questions is just based upon my own plot. I'm on five acres here, and I will admit, I've had grass over 12 inches in the middle part of it. If you've driven by, you've seen it. Part of the reason for that is, if it's rained in the last two weeks, I can't get a mower into the middle of my field because it's a pond. But I know at a certain point, the tall grasses wilt, die, shrink down. We're hanging into September. At what point do you see the height of this decreasing due to just the cold in the winter?
It's not going to shrink very significantly. I mean, what's going to happen is, over the winter time frame, we get ice and snowy vents and rainfall, that's how the material's going to shrink and decrease, okay? So the game plan is that let it go through this growing season with the flowers, get into the springtime frame, and then we'll start manipulating it. The best management is the fire burn, okay? We talked about the mowing, but what the mowing does, it creates a dead layer of thatch material that suppresses the growth, future growth of the flowers and the forbs and things we want going. So you basically, if you're going to mow it, you've got to get in there and just mow it and either kind of bag it or rake it or get it off there.
Bag it last year.
Right. So you can't just mow it and leave it like some, you know, I mow my yard, I don't bag my yards, but that thick vegetative map there's going to suppress the growth of the flowers. So the burning's a better situation because it cleans up all that dead detritus, allows the sunlight to penetrate the microbial fungi, and it puts a boost back in the system. Some of those flowers and forbs in his mix are actually nitrogen fixing plants, they're legumes. So there's no need to artificially fertilize this plot, like, majority of people, you know, everybody's fertilizing their own to make it look nice. Well, there's no fertilization needed here. So the fire management and the composition of the materials we have in the stand is a self-propagating thing to where basically every couple of years, you do that fire burn on it.
Okay. Mike, do you want to bring up the last slide you had? Middle paragraph, obviously, you've got a lot of people here that are not happy with it. What type of solution do you see working out with everybody here?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to attempt to understand what these folks think. To be honest with you, this is the first time I'm figuring out who these people are. I've had anonymous letters left in my mailbox and other things too, so this is the first time I've seen any of these folks. You know, Mr. Nolan and Anita in particular, I live across the street from them, you know, we've actually had what I thought was a pretty decent relationship. I've been over to their house for parties, my family's been over there, my daughters watch their cat, my wife played bongo with Anita. And then, you know, the first time I saw that it was really generative, and I've talked to Mr. Nolan specifically about the deal, and matter of fact, even recently, a few weeks ago, I'm like, hey, man, like, what's going on over here? You know, you see what's going on over here? And he's like, yeah, you know? And I'm like, I don't know, man. I go, it's a lot taller than I would have thought, but, you know, I'm working on it and give it some time and stuff like that. And he said, well, you know, the only thing I really don't like is, you know, I feel like some of those weeds are blowing over into my yard. And, you know, I said, hey, I'm real sorry about that. I said, you know, Mike takes pretty good care of his yard, and, you know, he's out there trying to catch moles and all that stuff all the time. I'm like, hey, man, if you need a spot spray or like, you need to do something over there to help you out, I'm going to do that, trying to be a decent neighbor. You know, and then I get the, you know, the vacation picture, you know, kind of the pictures of him in front of my stuff, and I'm like, from Patrick? And that's the first time I realized that's who it was. You know, someone left a letter that said, you know, right, but, I mean, you were in the picture. And I think the other part of it was...
That wasn't supposed to be me put out, but it must put out.
Right. Fair enough. I mean, we're all here now, I mean, secrets out, like, I'm not trying to, you know, do anything. But then, but, you know, there was a letter in our mailbox that, you know, you should be ashamed of yourself and, you know, blah, blah. I'm like, look, I mean, I'm just a guy trying to, you know, I pay my crazy taxes out here just like everybody else, and I worked my butt off, and I spent 160 nights away from my family last year, traveling, trying to provide for them, and this is something that's pretty nice when we come home to, something we enjoy. And I realize the neighbors don't like it. And I'm not trying to, you know, win neighbor of the year award or anything over here. I'm trying to mind my own business. That's part of the reason I moved out here. And if they don't, like, if they don't like the way it looks, that's not something I'm going to be able to help, and we probably won't find a resolution. If the only standard of a yard is something that's mowed diagonally, crossed at three inches high, that's, you know, then I don't know that we're going to find an agreement. But what I'm appealing to is a little bit of, just think about something different. It doesn't have to be three inches high, mowed in diamond shape. I mean, do we want to be Lee Wood, where you can only put so many signs in your yard, and you got to have this kind of fence? And, like, I don't think so. I mean, that's why I moved out here, to try to get on a couple acres. Wish I could have afforded more acres a little farther out, but, you know, I don't make that much money. But, anyway, I worked my butt off at that house. I mean, my absolute butt off. And so, you know, I realize the yard's not great for everyone. I'd like to try to make an appeal, you know, if they don't. I mean, the kind of the condition in there to get people to agree to it, I can't get five people to figure out where to go to lunch. So I don't know that I'm going to get five people to agree to this thing, and again, what's a neighbor?
It doesn't say to agree.
Okay.
It just indicates you have to submit what efforts, just showing that you made at.
Like a management plan.
With the neighbor.
Right.
Well, whatever it is, that, you know, you scheduled a coffee or, you know, so it's, there isn't, it's very clear in the proposed, there's no, now, the council ultimately, and the neighbors will be notified of when that meeting is, and so they can address the council. But ultimately, there, this is not, the way this is set up in its current form is not that you have to have everyone's agreement.
Like I said, I think this last slide to me is, you know, where, I'm glad you went back to it because that's kind of where I wanted to end, which is like, there's got to be a solution to this thing that at least can buy us some time to see if we can do what we say we're going to do. And I think, you know, if we could say, all right, next fall, we're going to come back and we'll take pictures and look at this thing again, and if it's still, you know, the wild west out there, then we can maybe have a different discussion. But I feel like we're in the middle of something that we've worked pretty hard on, and it's just like, well, tear it down because the neighbor doesn't like it. It's like, that doesn't seem really that fair to me, and all due respect, and to my family.
How long have you been there?
Been there for about six years, yeah. And this has been, I've been doing this thing for a couple of years now. This is a couple of years' worth.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for me? Okay, thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to just ask another neighbor. I don't think the issue here is so much environmental. We all appreciate...
Can you step up to the microphone?
It's the fact that it's a neighborhood, and it's demeaning. It really doesn't look very nice. I'm sorry, it doesn't. But if I were to do this in my yard, you do it in your yard, they do it in their yard, I think you're creating monsters. I mean, your whole process is going to be basically weeds and sunflowers. I think the issue is where it is, not what it is. I like the concept, I like the idea, but even if it was half of as much as he has, you know, where it wasn't coming all the way around and out on the roadway, it wouldn't look so bad, but keep it to the back and the side where it's not infringing on all the other properties sideways. And that's really all I have to say. I think it's a matter of where it's at, not the process. I like the idea of environmental, I think it's great, but I don't want to have it in my, I don't want to do my yard and my neighbor to do their yard. I think you're just, you're just letting things get out of hand if you do. That's all.
All right, thank you, Marcia. Anita, yeah, Mike or Anita, you want to come up and share a few?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and City Administration. My name is Anita Nolan, and with my husband, Mike, we reside at 9100 Oak Country Lane. First of all, we do support Kansas' efforts to promote wildlife and native grasses in First of all, we do support Kansas' efforts to promote wildlife and native grasses in the right location. In fact, Mike was a Green Team Coordinator for West Star Energy under the leadership of Brad Lovelace, coordinate or who is now Secretary of Kansas Department of Wildlife Parks and Tourism. Mike has worked on various projects that include native grasses and wildlife, or wildflowers. Our objection is to the weeds we see at ninety-one oh-five oh Country Lane, it's clearly in violation, um, of weeds over twelve inches. Every day we leave our house and we see this, every day, weeds five, six, seven feet in height. And we don't see any maintenance being done. This has been complained about since July, and not one weed has been chopped down since we have complained, except maybe along the perimeter if they fall over. When I called Mr. Gardenhire in July, I said I was concerned about a neighbor with tall weeds. He asked if it was ninety-one oh-five oh Country Lane, and when I answered with the affirmative, he said he's received numerous complaints on this. But he said he couldn't do anything because there was a state mandate. So I called back again in August, and I said, can I see a copy of that mandate? When I got it, I reviewed it, it was not a mandate, it was a contract with the State of Kansas, where they paid him three hundred dollars to plant warm season grasses and forbs to enhance pollinator and upland, upland bird habitat, which was quail. I called the State of Kansas, and they informed me that this contract did not override city ordinances and regulations, so here we are now. We are concerned the yard harbors reptiles, insects, rodents, and animals. And yes, we have some, we have raccoons. I don't approve of feeding them because they're destroying our property. Um, we know how skunks during digging in our yard, we found out, we never had skunks before. We're concerned the weeds are spreading to the neighboring yards. We've already felt the effects of this, and I tell you, we will be spending more than three hundred dollars to eradicate these weeds. And we did not sign up for this project, we did not sign up for the weeds to come into our yard. Um, our concern is the inciteliness of the property. When guests come, the first thing they say, what is going on across the street? We're concerned about property values, if anyone in the general facilities are trying to sell and potential buyers see this yard, it is a very poor reflection on the city of DeSoto. When we saw our neighbor straying the yard in the spring two thousand nineteen, we thought he was straying for weeds, but he told us he was killing the grass so he could plant wildflowers. But what he described is not what we are seeing, not even close. While we understand the importance of the State of Kansas to promote the growth of native grasses and enhanced wildlife, the plan belongs in a rural area or a larger acreage, not in a subdivision with well-maintained yards. So we ask that you do not pass this ordinance. I do have a document signed by various residents in the subdivision who live by, drive by, or walk by the yard, and oppose passing an ordinance to this effect. And I don't know if Lana passed that out yet or not, there were two sheets?
Yes, we have that.
Okay? I even did some research with Kansas Native Plant Society. And what they say is, how do I use native plants in my landscaping? Native plants can be used in a small wildflower meadow. A border or grouping, a specimen of plants can be effective. And then I go to another page, how do I get started? Check your city ordinances, there may be restrictions on type of plants in your front yard. Goes on and on about how to do it, but this isn't the proper place to have this. It needs to be in the country. We have ten acres, we could probably plant it on our bottom land where nobody would see it. But not where everyone who drives by sees this, it's just, it's very incitely, it's a blight. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anita. Uh, sure, you can have a couple minutes.
First of all, I wanted to thank you all for being here with these, like, crazy times, especially. Um, I'm Isabel, I'm Evan's daughter, I go to DeSoto High School, I'm a senior. Um, I have participated in my school in many different environmental things, such as Environment Club for three years, where we have done different projects, such as, um, we just started beekeeping this year, um, so that's been a really big thing. I've taken environmental science classes, which have also helped me, um, find out about opportunities like me and my father started. So I wanted to talk about how I've gone to summer camp for multiple years, and it is in the Flint Hills where these tall grass berries are. And it is really sad to see how they have been deteriorating over the past few years, and how it is such a beautiful thing, and how for it to keep disappearing like this is really upsetting. And so for it to be outside my front door is a very unique thing, that I think many people should jump more at the opportunity to have. And I think that, as my father showed in his PowerPoint, it is gonna take a few years. But I also think that good things do take a lot of time, and so I think you should take that into consideration when you think about this more. And I think, especially to my neighbors, that it is very, you should think about the future and not the present. Because if all good things took not very much time, then life would be probably pretty boring, cuz you would not be waiting on anything, and what's the, what's the fun in that? So I think it's gonna be a beaut- like, I don't really like walking out my front door and not being able to see the neighbor's yard across from me, like, that's not a great thing, but I think the day that I get to walk out my front yard and see beautiful flowers everywhere is a very unique thing that not many people can like that. Cuz if you look at just your manicured lawns, that's kinda boring. And I think that manicured lawns don't have to be what's expected by the city, but I think that these beautiful things should be, like, the city should want that in their, in their yards. And I think it's gonna be a beautiful time when, um, the neighbors, like, you guys live right across from us, you look at our yard all the time, but when you get to look at it in a few years, and there's beautiful flowers everywhere, I think that you're gonna thank us for having this beautiful thing. Good things take time, good things take time. It's been two years, it's been two years, um, and it's gonna take four, and that's not that much time in the span of everyone's lives. So I think that... That you really gotta take time, this is gonna be a beautiful thing, especially, like, my dad moved out here to be so we wouldn't have to deal with being so close to people and, like, having, um, to have people so close to us. So I think that it's gonna be a beautiful thing when all these flowers are out, and I, yeah, I think that it's extremely beneficial, especially for me, someone that really wants to go into biology and environmental things, that I get to have this in my own yard, so. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Mike, come on.
Well, I think you might be correct, but also, it is, having this in the city is something that the city should frankly ask for people to do, because it, I think it's extremely beneficial for the city. And also, this happens in, um, close to us, like, Shawnee Mission Park has this everywhere, and it is beautiful, it is gorgeous.
Alright, we'll...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think he's talking, it's new, it's really healthy right now.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, so... Yeah.
Can I look to speak just?
Well, sure, I'll let you speak, I'll let you ask a question, I'll let you speak, too, right?
My name is Patty Williams, and I live at three-two-eight-one-zero West Ninety-first Terrace. It's just around the corner from Evan's home. And I have degrees in chemistry and biology, and I do appreciate anything that is supported by the Kansas Department of Wildlife, I mean, anything. However, I, as a retired law enforcement officer, I also support adherence to current rules and regulations. So with regards to this program, I believe the state should be expected to communicate to all current and potential participants that conformance to local regulations is still required, and this does not provide an exemption. I do believe that participants in this program should be expected to be aware of and conform to all local ordinances, and recognize that the participation does not exempt them. I've lived around the corner since nineteen eighty-seven. This area has always been within the city limits, and residents in the area have always been expected to conform with existing city rules and regulations. So in conclusion, for all involved parties, what I see is wonderful improvement opportunities focusing on awareness, communication, and education. I do not see any evidence that can support changes to an existing effective weed ordinance. In fact, changing it almost seems to be rewarding unsatisfactory behavior, such as ineffective communication and disregard of city regulations. So I am not in favor of changing the ordinance with the current proposed wording that can allow a weed ordinance exemption in a neighborhood such as Oak Country Estates. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Discussion from council, thoughts, comments?
Mayor, I just have one question with, if you allow me?
Sure.
Uh, with all the experts there and the, and the crowd, and, and that have come tonight, I appreciate that. Um, and the last, his last photo showed those sunflowers. Uh, is, is sunflowers considered a weed in our city? What's that?
There's pictures of them all around behind the council.
Right, well, the only reason, the reason I bring this up is because everybody just mentioned that they, they drive in and out of that area, and for years, um, there has been, um, sunflowers grown on that corner, uh, at, that, that were four and five feet tall. And, you know, we didn't hear any complaints from any of that. Um, so I was just wondering if it was considered a weed, or if it was considered a flower?
Yeah, Kevin? I can just address your, uh, question. Um, my interpretation would be no, that, that, that would not. Because if you look at the weed ordinance, it actually, it does, uh, address noxious weeds, and I'm, I don't know, I'm assuming a sunflower is not considered a noxious weed, but outside of that, it is primarily aimed at grass. Um, you know, that can create, uh, fire menace, menace, that type of thing. So no, just, uh, flowers, um, the, the weed ordinance does not consider those to be in violation.
Thank you, I just didn't want it to hinderance that, uh, that project in the future, cuz it, it does a, a great thing for our city. And there is a lot of participation in it, and, uh, and so I just wanted to make sure to say.
Thank you, Kevin. Danny, any comments?
No, the only thing is, I think that, you know, we do have to abide by our rules. And, um, you know, I, I think that, um, the growth in this area, I think, is, I can understand the property owners and, um, the way they feel about it. And, um, I can understand the wildlife project too, I'm an owner of bees myself, and, um, and, uh, know their habitats and, uh, how painful it is to lose hives. And I've lost hives myself, so I can understand both sides, but I think we gotta adhere by our ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Well, I guess, I, I would share that, I, I, when I first viewed that, I was taken aback. I mean, you know, it's not something I had ex- I had heard at the reports, but the, 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 volume and density of that growth was kinda overwhelming when I came around the corner and, and, and looked at it, and was probably less sympathetic to your plight before hearing you speak than I, than I am now. Um, but, um, I had a lot of the similar thoughts that perhaps the state grant program should reinforce the need to confirm, um, what local ordinances are in play, um, because I would've rather had this conversation, uh, a year ago before, at the start of your project, um, um, and understood. Because I, I understand, I, I done a little, done a lot, you know, like everybody, when you get a new topic, you do Google research. So this is a trend online, online in communities, creating these, um, pockets of, of native habitat, even in urban areas. There, we're trying to recreate some of these spaces that we've lost to, for the purpose of reinforcing the habitat for the pollinators, primarily, the, the bees and butterflies, so, um, I see the importance and value of it. I just, um, I'm, um, wish we could've had the conversation before, before we were at this point. Not that I've got any great direction or solutions, I'm just, uh, offering my thoughts and ramblings right now at this point.
I might ramble on a little with you then, if that's, if that's alright. Um, yeah, I am all for conservation and, and habitat opportunities. You know, I have thought about milkweed and some things like that on my place, and I've got about four and a quarter acres, um, altogether right now, and DeSoto is a, a large lot area. But I'm also one of the first ones to call Mike or somebody and go, hey, we got a mowing problem, right? I'm one of the first to, to, to kinda keep up on that. I think the thing that, um, maybe was highlighted in the conversation tonight that I hadn't really thought about to that regard of whether it's the mowing ordinance or the weed ordinance, or wherever the issue is, is this idea of what's the difference between the yard and the overgrowth on the rest of the property? And just using my eyeball on, on Oak Country, by far, the majority of Oak Country is overgrown in trees. And so, trees that are, that likely have undergrowth associated with it. Um, the majority of Oak Country Estates eight is still in tree overgrowth. And so, if it's anything like the trees I have on my lot, I haven't set foot in them because it is so thick with unmanaged undergrowth and poison ivy, and I'm crazy allergic to poison ivy. But I don't know, but I, so I don't know where that, that fits. And then I've also got a very large, um, landscaped area that's a variety of things that I do a good or not-so-good job of taking care of, of shrubs and trees and, and pampas grass and some other stuff. So where does that difference lie in a landscaped area versus a yard? Um, Rob, just looking at yours, I'm gonna say you're at least a third overgrown of tree overgrowth, and probably two-thirds mowed. Maybe something that...
About third on the...
West side.
West side of the pond.
Yeah. And so, you know, what's the, where do we create the difference between what's manicured, if you will, manicured yard, and what is unmanicured and naturalized? What, you know, and, and in this case, naturalized is intended to be wildflowers. Um, I'm completely in with the mayor on first looking at that and going, oh my gosh, this is out of control, send in codes enforcement, because probably, it is, in my opinion, maybe a violation of the current code. So part of it is, how did we get to where we are? I wish this would've been a discussion item earlier on. As we talk about the ordinance, and, and Commissioner Lane asked the question about a special use permit, and, you know, with something like that, um, or even in consideration of the, the, what would be provided by this ordinance, there's gotta be some guidelines, there's gotta be, what would be an appropriate setback? There would be some, there was some question about, should it be a backyard, side yard thing as opposed to a front yard thing? Um, and I think we'll probably get into a lot of, um, variance in how we might interpret what would be applicable or appropriate, um, as well as what kind of planting is applicable and appropriate. So, you know, it's forging a lot of new territory. I also, you know, know that DeSoto's a place where people moved out of the city, if you will, to...
We, uh, we allowed chickens, we were early adopters of the chicken movement.
And in fact, we allow, we allow goats, and we allow goats, so, um, and, and as far as the, the issue of critters and, and pests and whatnot, absolutely, they exist throughout that area, they exist in, in my area. My son was bitten by a copperhead on a paved driveway at our neighbor's house last fall, and our neighbor yesterday killed a copperhead in there, on their driveway. And so, you know, I, we've got raccoons and deer, and I love the deer, and, um, so I don't think that it's creating, um, a situation of, of rodents or critters or, or whatever it may be. That, they exist in our community as it is because of our large lot nature, so, I don't know, it's, it's a struggle. I, I got complaints about it. Um, I was put off by it. I will say I've been maybe enlightened or informed as to a little bit different way of thinking by the presentation tonight, but I don't know exactly where I stand yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Mayor, if you don't, just, Kevin, on the ordinance, um, as far as guidelines, I did give that some thought, and just thought that, you know, if this was something that you wanted to allow, um, I just thought of all the different variations, and so that's why this truly would be a case-by-case approval by the council. So there may be, you know, if someone wanted to do a four-by-four foot, um, you know, native grass. So I just saw that, if, I think it would be difficult to come up with, you know, guidelines or even setbacks, not knowing, you know, what someone might propose as a habitat for, uh, for wildlife or for vegetation. So that's why I kinda left it open-ended where, um, you know, you would consider it as presented by the applicant, and after you heard from the neighbors on their thoughts.
So, but in that, does my thirty-foot-by-four... So, but in that, does my 30 foot by 40 foot landscape bed that, you know, create a situation that would need to be permitted, if you will? Or does our neighbor's ginormous garden, you know, cover enough area and grow tall enough that it would cause somebody to take exception to and then throw us into this?
Yeah, it's primarily aimed at grasses or noxious weeds. And I do, but we do, as you know, code enforcement is complaint basis. And you're right, there are many places in the city that, you know, would be in violation. But we do, we handle these by complaints and this property generated complaints. And so that's why we're here dealing with it.
Mr. Friesen, I think, had something he wanted to add.
I can just say a couple more things. First off, in reference to the comments that were made, like I didn't do my homework, didn't do my due diligence and all this. This is my 17th year in the chair, so this isn't my first rodeo on these habitat enhancements. In visiting with Mr. Haake, I'm sure I covered the bases and asked the questions, what would be permissible? And in good faith, we entered into this agreement because we're planting flowers. We backed off on the grasses. The grasses that aren't showing up right now, that will grow at some point during the rate, are only going to be shorter grasses. Okay, we're basically planting wildflowers or forbs. And in good faith, that wasn't any kind of violation of any kind of city code or ordinance. So believe me, I wouldn't have gone into this agreement if I'd have known it's going to take all this time and effort and cause this much of an issue. I got enough things to deal with other than this. 16 years ago, I stood before the council here to try to help get the deer ordinance up and going. Okay, it appears as like people are thinking this is my first rodeo and they don't know what I'm doing. Granted, I'm probably not the sharpest tool in the shed, but I've covered the bases on this.
All right.
Do you define a wildflower, a forb, a weed? It's semantics, okay? If it flowers, it's a flower, okay? Grasses are grasses. And then you've got forbs, like sunflowers are a forb. That's in between a grass and a woody stem plant. And we get into this whole height issue. I mean, where does it stop? People are planting corn in their backyard. Corn is an annual plant you have to plant. These are perennial plants that are going to come back year after year. It's a slow process. We budge it up to death tonight. Corn plants in your garden are tall. People have tall plants around their house. If there were tall sunflowers in somebody's garden, it's the same stuff that Mr. Haake has in his yard. It's just, it's a different deal. I have, there's no acre requirements for my habitat first plants. And a lot of these smaller plots with the pollinator stuff, yeah, it's in the backyards. It's in school pots. It's in park areas. It's in these odd areas. Bees and butterflies don't need acres and acres of habitat. They need habitat strung out across the landscape in various places so that when they're on that southern migration coming back, they find these flower sources, a nectar source, they hit those spots. There are flowers inside his plant. You can't see it, granted. The stuff came up there that we didn't know what was going to come up, some of the extra material. And we're trying to address that down, you know, down the road. But this was not done to try to make folks aggravated or take two hours of everybody's time tonight. Believe me. Yes, I do have a similar planting in Lenex, in the city of Lenex, working with a church group. And I went over all this with them several, that contract's about a year old. They wanted to stop mowing some of the odd areas they have in the church, cover all the bases there with them. They planted the material, had excellent stand of flowers and forbs. There was a miscommunication with the church because they had some kind of city program where they do fireworks in the fall or something. Long and short of it, they went in there and mowed off all that habitat. So that aggravated me because here's dollars that the state put in habitat that was actually showing good response and they mowed it down. Then luck of the draw, there was a pipeline that came through. All that material is all torn up right now. So it's a huge step backwards. And a lot of my acreage stuff, my district covers Leavenworth, Wyandotte, Johnson, Miami County. It's primarily urban. So if I don't do a lot of urban activity at work, I don't work in the rural setting all the time. In reference to, yes, I live outside of Baser, it's in a rural setting. My taxes are all residential. Nothing's deemed agriculture on my property. I'd love to get it that way. I'd love to have bees. I'm trying to get wildflowers and forbs. Yeah, I have projects inside the city, right. Yeah, there's different regulations, right. As far as taxes and do's and don'ts and requirements, right. Right, and I always just kind of, like I said, I go off of good faith because I don't delve into all the ordinance stuff. So when somebody tells me something, that's kind of where I go. Well, I understand, but I'm passionate about what I do. And I love my job. And I'm picking and choosing my battles here because I think this maybe sets the precedent for some things down the road. And I, granted, I mean, I didn't expect the growth to look like what it was going to look like because we got this extra response. That's an added benefit and we're willing to try to address that if we can get some compensation for that. But cutting that material down now, you know, there's flowers out there that provide habitat.
Thank you. So I'm going to echo some of what you've heard from Rick and from Mike, Hana Michael. When I first arrived by, definitely saw what everybody was seeing, the weeds, the overgrowth. Completely understand. At the same time, I'm watching what's presented tonight, understanding that everything that's being said is that this is an immediate step to get to what would be the flower beds. Like Kevin, not Mike, but Kevin mentioned, the critter side of it, the land around there is going to be drawing the critters no matter what. Skunks are not new this year. My dog will attest to that. By the way, tomato soup and tomato juice doesn't work. Dish soap, baking soda, and hydrogen peroxide is your mix to deal with that. In the past, my dog's been sprayed four times. This year, he's had his third bath. And unfortunately, when he has his winter coat, we're able to shave him the first time. After he shaved the first time, we're out of luck. And that's because we've had five baby skunks on our property in the last week and a half, two weeks. So it's another interesting thing. I don't live in your neighborhood, but I know your neighborhood. And most of you, if you've been there for any amount of time, know my kids. And that they've come and sold popcorn at your house for a decade plus. My oldest started selling there, I think he was eight or nine. COVID's kind of throwing it off this year, so you won't see my kids this year. But I also remember that property prior to the current owners having it. And the edges were grown up. It was not as well maintained as it has been. So while you're seeing the weed growth, you're also seeing improvements to the property from what I remember over the years prior to the ownership there. Like Rick said, I'd like to have seen more communication ahead of time. If we do, I don't know if I'm ray fraction one way or the other tonight, to be honest. But if we do consider the ordinance, I think I would like some verbiage changes if we do. One, replace the weeds with, basically, the Kansas natural wildflowers or natural grasses as opposed to weeds, to where there's a clarification. Any other projects, I think, wouldn't just be, what's the word here? You've got. Which are part of an approved Habitat Wildlife Project. Will not be provided so long as the project remains approved, will be exempt. There were two terms that were used in there. One was basically the Habitat Project that would tend to lend that it was under a management or under review, kind of like what we're seeing here versus just the homeowner claiming it.
Right, I wanted to be, I wanted to make sure we weren't sort of kneecapping ourselves by. And that's why the way this is put together is that you would have to approve this Habitat Project in order for it to be an exemption.
Yeah, I'm seeing both sides of it. And I'm torn between both sides.
All right, I guess seeing we've just had the ordinance tonight, we've taken the testimony and I've heard folks speak. We're short one person on our body tonight. I would like to hear Lori, Councilwoman Murdoch's thoughts on this as well. I would entertain that we would take this up again at our next meeting when we're hopefully at a full body.
I'll make a motion to table if I can give a little additional commentary first. Okay, and to kind of follow along, Rob, if I could.
Sure, can I take, and it'd be a kind of, can I take a quick poll question? Just kind of a quick raise your hand. I know how it looks this year. If it isn't going the direction that they say, it's not as tall, you're starting to see more flowers and it's heading towards the picture you see there next year, how many of you would give that winter time into the spring to see if it would actually do that? Okay.
So kind of following on with some of Rob's comments about, you know, maybe some of the definition or structure. I think I liked where you were headed about, that it's under some sort of guidance or structured habitat plan or something as opposed to ad hoc. So where I was going with it is, if we come back and look at this again, I would ask that there's a little bit more structure given to what some thoughts or guidelines would be to make it permissible, you know. Maybe it's my 13 years on planning commission, but I'm kind of thinking of, you know, some of those, some of the elements that you would use in consideration of approval if we look at it again. So with that, I will make a motion to table the item on the, how is this? On the code amendment to, for Habitat Projects until the next council meeting.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Okay, I guess the good news about that is it will be item 3A, I'm assuming. So it'll be first on the agenda. I'm sorry? Oh, sure, yeah. As long as you wear your mask. I'm assuming the mask mandate will still be in effect. And I appreciate you all wearing your masks and observing the social distancing. I appreciate the civil conversation we were able to have here. It was good, good interaction. Thank you all. That's this body's prerogative, I guess, when that would come. And that's what Kevin is probably asking that maybe we define a little better. Okay. Again, thank you all. We'll move on with our meeting. Item five, executive session, we do not have one. So we'll go to advisory reports. Mike, what do you have for us? Nothing really, just a reminder, Monday's Labor Day. I'm sure you won't forget about that. And I'll be off tomorrow out of the office, but available. I sent a few emails to you this week. One was about COVID procedures in the workplace. Still waiting here on that. So as soon as we hear back any word on that, we'll let the council know the situation is there. That was all I had. Reminders. Patrick?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you. Brad? Jay, you want to throw in anything?
I'm good.
All right. Lana?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Council comments. Kevin Ritter, would you like to start anything to share with the group?
I don't think I have a whole lot. I do appreciate the patience that we just put in that last item. And, you know, I hope to have some good discussion next week or next meeting with it. I do have some, I was kind of like you guys, I'm kind of torn in it. And I'll do some research and have some more comments for it. But one of the other, one of the other areas that I do have concern with, with tall weeds, since you mentioned grass, Patrick, is the, I won't mention the owner's name, but it's on 91st Street, right in the turn into, to those properties back by ours. And the line of sight, because they won't mow that whole 40 acres, the line of sight gets the.
So the property directly east of El Patron?
Yes. And so the line of sight gets really dangerous. And if the kids are going to be traveling up and back and down there anytime soon, it needs to be, make sure it gets maintained. And if it's all weeds and grass that's over the limit, then the whole 40 acres should be paved or mowed. It shouldn't just be allowed to just through the corner.
Yeah, we addressed that earlier in the year. And they did do some mowing, although that whole 40 acres is under this agricultural exemption. They bail that in the fall. And I don't know if the quality of those bales, if any animal on the planet would eat that. But I have doubts, but they do that for tax purposes.
Yeah, that's cool. Maybe I missed the whole bailing process. I just.
I'm not sure, yeah, yeah. But we, the sightline thing, we definitely can address and we will.
Well, please. And I don't want to keep us here, I have nothing more.
All right, thank you. Danny, would you have anything to share tonight?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Rob?
Just one item. And I mentioned this to one of the state staff, but talking about weeds, the right of ways over in our area have only been mowed once this year. And some of the right of ways are getting taller than, they finally sprayed them, so that actually with chemicals. So they're like about two thirds of what they were. But they're actually starting to cover speed limit signs as well. And on some of the areas, when you go up to a corner, they're starting to create visual impairments on turning.
Okay, if you have any specifics, let me know.
87th Street or 87th Street, Corliss, Waverly at 80, or at 83rd Street. There's, those aren't actually too bad, but they're bad enough that they do start to impair your ability to see oncoming traffic when you're making a left turn.
Okay, we'll get them mowed.
And then I think some on Waverly, there's some there as well. We're just the homeowners, because the grade of it just can't get to.
Yeah. Areas that we normally mow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, Rob?
Nope.
Kevin?
I have nothing.
Okay. I think I'm going to keep it brief tonight too. I just reiterate, thank you all for coming. I appreciate you all being here and I would entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, we're adjourned.
I only did that.
This conference is no longer being recorded.